Very good. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting, a working session for the elected body. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. The time is 9:00 a.m. We may move around on the schedule a little bit to accommodate those in the audience, but I will turn the schedule over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a request from Troy Martinson, St. Louis County, regarding a 10-minute parking sign on the east side of the Government Services Center on Third Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Martinson, come on up. If the green light isn't on there, please turn that on. Mr. Martinson, welcome to the committee home meeting.
Thank you. So, I work at the Government Service Center here, and a lot of people have been coming up and requesting a 10-minute parking sign on the east end, across from the bank, that first spot by the crosswalk, because we have a lot of drop boxes at that door, and so that's what we're requesting, is one spot for 10-minute parking.
Okay, very good. Thank you. It was reasonable to me. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. Is that on the east side or west side?
The east side. There's an entrance door there where we have a lot of drop boxes.
So it would be northbound traffic, parking east?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any?
Yep.
Southbound, yes. Any other questions, comments from the elected body here? I think it's a reasonable request. You can see people stacking up. I see some of the people who are physically challenged and others trying to get across the street to just drop off an item for whether it's your property tax or whatever. So I think that with respect to our parking, it's calendar parking on each side of the street, but in that particular case, it's a 10-minute parking, allowing you to drop off, pick up, or make a delivery, come back, which makes perfectly good sense for that to occur. So I'm looking for action from the elected body with respect to this. Counselor Freely?
Does 10 minutes suffice, or would it be drop-off only would be preferable to keep it moving? I don't know.
All right, Mr. Martinson?
It could be either one. I mean, they just walk up there and drop the envelopes off and back to their cars, so it's really not 10 minutes. It's, yeah, basically a drop-off. Yes.
And I think 10 minutes, I think, if I may, is more prudent, because if it's pick-up and drop-off, you know, maybe you're picking up somebody, you're waiting for 20 minutes, you know, or whatever, you're going in the building looking for somebody. So putting a time limit on there, even though it's difficult to enforce, it gives the perspective in the end, people to abide by that rule. Counselor Freely?
I'd move the motion for 10-minute parking on the east side of the Government Services Center on Third Avenue.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
All support with some discussion, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo for discussion, further discussion? Counselor Bearbo?
I would put the sign a little bit different. I would put drop-off only 10 minutes, because otherwise, people just sit there if it's 10 minutes, and you won't know when they come in. Put a little more pressure on them to get out of there if you put drop-off only 10 minutes. Understand?
Drop-off only instead of 10 minutes?
Yeah, instead of drop-off only 10 minutes, but the whole works, so it's a drop-off.
Oh, pick-up and drop-off only 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Sure, that's, that's fine with you, Counselor Freely?
I would amend that, yes.
Amended by Counselor Freely, with the request of the seconded party, which is Counselor Bearbo. So it has been moved and supported to put the signage in. You can work out with our city staff about what the wording of the signage is and when that occurs.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martinson. So it has been moved and supported. Before we vote, any other questions or concerns?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you for your time.
Work our staff, Mr. Martinson, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a discuss a request from St. Louis County regarding installation of a new septic system along Highway 135.
Thank you. Sir, would you please come to the counter, and if the green light is on, please state your name for the record, and welcome.
Good morning, councilors. I'm Dave Skirla with the Land and Minerals Department, and we work at the Land and Minerals there on 7820, across from Public Works. Recently, we were doing some remodeling in 2019, and we were told that we would have to hook up to the city water and sewer. The unfortunate problem is the city water sewer is across the road, 135. So we had S.E.H. with Matt, I don't think, is he here?
Matt Reed.
He's here. And we discussed that boring under the road, or digging up the road, and there would be excess of $300,000. So we're looking to get maybe a variance to upgrade our existing septic that we have there. We've had Nick Bugallis there, design, it's in your packet there, and, you know, it's, he said in his statement there, the septic is not failing, but with added occupancy and more building space there, we'd like to upgrade the system.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Questions, concerns, comments from the council? Counselor Bearbo, you had some issues?
Yeah, I have some issues. We put that whole line and stuff in for everybody to hook up to. Your other buildings are hooked up to it on the opposite side. I believe that you need to spend the money and hook up to our system, and not have a septic system out there in case someday you unload that building or do something different, and somebody needs to buy it, they'll be subject to some of the rules of hooking up. What was the cost estimate for the septic system?
If I could get Matt here to talk about that. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Scraba. Matt?
Good morning, everybody. So, back when Bill was still here, Bill Hennes, he actually was approached by the county, and he asked me to get involved and go take a look at this, and it actually isn't so much a matter, well, it's cost. Obviously, it's a high cost, but when I talked to the state, to the DOT, they weren't in favor of having them dig up Highway 135 to put a service line across. I am very skeptical that they're going to be able to directional drill across there based on what we've experienced up there in the past when we did the Yuland Brothers service coming across the county parking lot, and also seeing what they've got laying along there. If you drive up into their entrance, there's a whole bunch of big boulders there. Could they get lucky? Potentially, they could get lucky and shoot those lines underneath there, but that's my concern. I hate to have them go out and start directional drilling, and then they're hitting rocks, and hitting rocks, and hitting rocks, and they can't get it under there, and then they're, they're kind of stuck. So that was why I had actually suggested that they come here and talk to you guys about a variance. They could, for the cost, they could get it across the road if we can get permission for MINDOT, but when I talked to MINDOT at the time, they weren't overly inclined to give that permission, so that's, that's why they're actually here.
Thank you, Matt, for the clarification. Counselor Bearbo, any further?
No, not at this point.
Okay, thank you. You currently have, Mrs. Scraba, through the county, you already currently have a septic system there right now?
That's correct.
And you're looking just to upgrade it?
Yes.
And you're looking for permission from the city to give you permission to do so?
Correct.
And I think it's prudent to do, from my perspective. I'll wait for comments from the rest of the council. In the event some future time where, you know, there's some additional construction going on there, maybe, you know, whatever, then we can look at it at that particular time, based on a package with respect to whatever potential economic development come there, whether it's commercial or residential. And so I think it's prudent for us to, I don't think it's unreasonable to do, it's a recommendation from our engineer with respect to the issues that they have moving forward. So request, I think, is reasonable and prudent. I look for the elected body for additional information and comments. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Does this pose any risk of exposure to the city? Brian?
Brian?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, thank you.
If it's, if it's a project being undertaken by a private entity, the exposure to the city would be minimal.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bearbo?
Just one other question. With the upgrade, what do you anticipate the expectancy of the life of this upgrade to that system? How many years?
I know the current septic that's been in there has been there since the early 60s or 70s, and you're looking at 30 years, probably, I think. But the expert.
Well, I'm not a, I'm not a septic system expert, per se, but they're usually about 20 years. You could get more.
Yeah.
But the typical life expectancy for a septic system is 20 years.
Matt, I got one other question for you. Not that far from Borgon Road going down there, to dig along that south side, where is the sewer line that comes down from those houses?
Sewer is down by the lift station that got put in as part of Highway 53.
So like the house going up the hill and stuff, are they under Borgon Road then?
Not sure.
Were they hooked up?
Not 100% sure.
I still don't like septic systems.
I know, I know the main is down by the lift station, and the water main, the water main crossing is down that way as well. It's, it's just west, or east, excuse me, of the, of the lift station a little ways.
You'd have to go under Borgon Road either way, probably.
Not necessarily. They'd be able to, but it would be a long run, excuse me, for their service lines, but they could probably get there through the ditch.
Okay. No further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. I think if this was a new septic system being developed with non-existing, maybe it'd be alternatives to take a look at, but you do have existing septic system, it's been working well for you, it's over, it's probably set at its end of life, you're looking to upgrade the system. It doesn't have any disadvantage to the city or any liability to the city, it comes from liability to the county, so I'm looking for a motion or some kind of action by the elected body. Counselor Paulson?
Mayor, I just have one more question in terms of our process here. Normally, when we have variances, requests come forward, they go through planning and zoning. Are we circumventing our process? I'm comfortable doing this, but I just want to make sure our process is being conducted properly.
I don't think they're asking for a variance, they're just asking for an upgrade of the, of the system itself. There's no variance required from the city to give in order to build it. Is that correct?
Correct. It's not a construction variance, it's a, it's a deviation from city code requirement that requires them to connect to city sewers, what they're asking for. So the term variance is a deceiving term, it's really a deviation from city code that they're asking for.
Thank you for that clarification, and I'm comfortable to go ahead and make a motion then.
Okay, so you, Counselor Paulson moves to approve the request by St. Louis County to upgrade their septic system up at the Land and Minerals Department. Is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks for your time.
You bet. Thanks for coming in.
I'm actually an aye.
Go ahead, Counselor Bearbo.
I'm actually an aye, but when you asked me if there's a no, I said no, there wasn't a no. It's an aye for me.
It's an, yeah, every, it's an aye for all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bearbo. Yeah, it's unanimous. Here, thank you. Britt?
Thank you. Item number three is a request from Casper Construction for storage of equipment and pipe at the wastewater treatment plant facility.
Good morning. Would you please state your name for the record, and welcome?
Hi, good morning. I'm Dan Watkins from St. Louis County. Push the button. I'm on now.
We're good.
I'll restate it. I'm Dan Watkins with Casper Construction, project manager. We're doing the Street and Infrastructure Utility Improvements Project. So being that this is a two-year project, we would like to store equipment and materials on hand in the wastewater treatment facility on the south end of town. Ed Alto, I've been talking to him, he was unable to make it today, so he said, Tag, you're it, so I'm here. Basically, I'm requesting to store the equipment, materials down there throughout the winter, and in the springtime, when we resume down on Southern Drive and Third Avenue, remove the equipment and materials, and we'll restore it back to the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Is there any encum- encumbrance with respect to the operation of the wastewater treatment facility?
I don't believe so. In discussion with Ed, we'll store it in a big grassy area, and there was, when Bill Hennes was around, he said that there may be, if there's ever an issue with lines under there, something leaks or whatever, we may have to get in there and move our stuff, but if we need to, we'll get in there and move it. But he didn't say anything regarding for snow pushing or anything, it basically just sit there.
Okay, well, if you've, you've had some contact with our interim Public Works Director, he's not here today, so I would, I'm comfortable with it unless the council has any other issues with respect to that. I think if we were to move a motion forward with the codicil that we ensure that the wastewater treatment plan is in adversity affected, and that it is a recommendation from our Public Works Director. Oh, yes.
Sure. Yeah, good morning.
Mr. Mo.
I have been in contact.
I didn't see you back there in the weed patch.
Sorry.
Okay.
I have been in contact with Ed, and we don't have a problem with it, so it'll be less for us to mo.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul, appreciate it. Okay, that helps us significantly. Okay, looking for any questions, comments, or concerns, or action from the elected body?
Here, if I may?
Yes, Brian?
From, from a legal standpoint, I don't, I don't have any concern about this, but if, if the city is going to provide space, we may want to put some sort of a simple license agreement together that talks about liability and who would be responsible in the event that some of the equipment is damaged.
Sure.
Or something happens, but it should be a fairly simple document.
And you're agree, you're real clear, yes, sir?
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, so, Counselor Freely?
Just real quickly, like, when you guys were doing, or currently doing, construction, and you're using the Mill 40 area there, we didn't anticipate you putting the culverts like across that west alleyway, because we had a concern in the neighborhood with regard to traffic in that area, and we were going to move that traffic west. So all, my only concern would be that anything and everything would be up and out of the way of any continuous traffic through Southern Drive. That's one suggestion.
Yeah, we would have it all enclosed in the fenced-in area. Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Freely. Any other questions, comments, and if not, looking for council action?
I would move approval for the storage of equipment and pipe at the wastewater treatment center for Casper.
It's been moved by Counselor Freely, and supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? And we'll put together that little agreement to ensure, you know, the liability issue there, too. Okay, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request from John Swenson to conduct a campaign at Alcott Park to raise awareness for the homeless, and I don't see John here.
No, he is not able to make it right now, so.
Well, as part of his duties and responsibilities as the community relations officer, this is part of his job to help facilitate communication between the general public, people in need, arrangement of health, that's all part of his, his community service obligation, as well as his educational requirements for the SRO at the school. So I don't see any encumbrance here, so looking for any questions, comments, or action by the council? Counselor Bearbo?
Just one question, make sure, I don't have a problem with him doing that, just make sure it doesn't interfere with any events, so he needs to check with, with Brian Silbert to make sure there's no conflicts when he wants to do this.
Okay, yeah, we require that he schedule that with, through our park and rec director. Okay, thank you. Looking for council action?
Also move, Mayor, that we allow John Swenson to have this event at Alcott Park with, setting up the schedule with our park and rec director.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Bearbo. Is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an update on the lease agreement for fitness equipment for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center in the 9/24/21 meeting.
Okay, who wants to start this conversation? I guess I will. Then air break. I think the lease option is the best. I did some additional research, and talking to different organizations and other event centers and other places, it was difficult for me to find a fitness component that was operated privately, or through some kind of a lease agreement, but, or agreement with another entity to manage the facility, but even though it's additional money over time, I think the lease agreement, even if it's, even if it's non-motorized equipment, it's all-encompassing, so if something happens, or a weld breaks, or something on the, on the freeway, or something like that, so it's, it's a lease agreement moving forward, and you know, I've had experience in that regard, that was a long time ago, where we did lease all our equipment, and it was beneficial, but is additional cost in the long run, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the lease portion of it, but I leave it up to the elected body for additional comments and questions. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to speak to with our city attorney prior, and we, I guess, if maybe Brian, you want to clarify, because, Mayor, there's nothing in our packet documentation-wise at all, so.
Sure, that's fine. I think this is a continuation from our previous meetings and the discussion. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the update that I can provide is this. I did, at the request of the council, I prepared a separate contract, and I reached out to Precor, and specifically to Macro Lease, who would be financing the lease, and what they indicated to me is that they use their forms, and they're not going to even look at any other forms. What they did say, though, is that they are flexible in some of the terms, and there, there is a term that could be inserted, or would be inserted, that after the term of the lease is expired, the city would just own the equipment outright, so we, there would be no need to pay a dollar or anything else. So technically, at the end of that lease term, the city could either sell the equipment back, enter a new lease, sell the equipment on the, in the general market, or just maintain the equipment, you know, if it's freeways and something that doesn't require a lot of maintenance, the city has a lot of options then at the end of the lease term.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
If I may continue?
Counselor Paulson?
I, I guess, one of the things that I had requested regarding the, the purchase price outright, it was 122,000, I believe, and the lease is 150,000, so we were going to have a discussion on the differentiation, on the interest paid there, and if it was maintenance, what, what portion was maintenance, what portion was interest, and the warranties on some of those cardio equipment, some of the motors are seven years, so would we need a maintenance contract? And those are things that I requested to have come forward, and those are, again, not in our packet to look over. So to me, it's important that we understand, because that's an additional 30, almost, it's $28,000 that we're paying over the course of five years, and what is the interest broken out, and what is the maintenance fee broken out? Because most of these pieces of equipment are going to be under warranty, not maybe all the way up to five years, but some portion of those pieces of equipment will be under warranty over the five years, up to seven years, with some of the motors. I think that was stated in our, in our original packet. So that was one question that I wanted to have answered. I, I think that's quite a large amount of interest to be paid over five years, and it needs to be broken out, what's the interest rate versus if there's a maintenance fee wrapped into that lease payment, monthly payment? Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I think I have a little bit an advantage in understanding how that works, and how that's broken down based on past experience, so when, when the motor is under warranty for seven years, that's the motor. But the decking has to be replaced before that, way before that, so it's not just the piece of equipment with respect to the entire piece of equipment, only the motorized portion of it. So if there's a lot of use for the decking, after so many hours of use, that decking has to be replaced, it has to be reset. The, the structural portion of the deck, as you get pounded, that has to be replaced, that's not part of the warranty issue either, and so there's, there's a limited amount of warranty based upon that. So to have that information handy for us to consider would be important, and whether or not there is an actual interest rate or not, I, I don't know, but just from past experience, there was no interest. This was the cost, this is the contract for the maintenance and replacement and repair at any given time for any piece of equipment that's in it, whether it's electronic or not. So I think you're asking, Counselor Paulson, for some additional information to break down all those costs associated with that before we can move forward, before you can move forward.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I do believe in the original one, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, they did have an interest rate listed on there. I'm pretty sure I read like four-point-something, but it doesn't add up.
That, that is my recollection, as it was.
Okay, thank you. So with respect to your concerns, Counselor Paulson, you're looking for some additional information to drill down on those cost issues and a breakdown of that over the period of time before you, before you're ready to move forward. Thank you. Any other questions, comments with respect to this particular issue? Seeing none, looking for a, a motion to either move forward, or to table, or to, for some additional information? What is the, what is the elected body's reference? Counselor Beyondich?
I would move to table until we have all the information needed.
Okay, Counselor Beyondich has moved to table until we get the additional information that was outlined by Counselor Paulson. Is there support?
I'll support.
Support, since it's been moved by Counselor Beyondich, supported by Counselor Paulson, to table for additional information for the council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to approve the request for a quote from Tackler Farms for bio-cellulose disposal site, and we have Paul Mo here from the wastewater treatment plant.
Paul, you're up once again, officially.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm just here for any questions. Basically, it's the same as it was last year. Little, was Tackler Farms, their bid is to haul all of it, no matter how much we have. The other bid was for 900 wet tons.
And it's, the, the cost has not increased?
Oh, the cost has increased since last year.
What is the increased cost?
I'm not sure what it was last year. I, I believe it's maybe $4,000 more for the Tackler, and I don't know the exact cost of that, but.
Do we know what, well, we have to do it anyway, so were there, was there more than one bid?
Yeah, one was, was for 40, 50,000, and one was for 31,000. Tackler was for 31,000.
Thank you very much.
I'll move the approval of the Tackler Farms biosolid disposal.
Moved by Counselor Freely to approve the agreement with Tackler Farms for biosolid disposal. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Freely.
Thank you. Item number seven is approve the resolution for a lease agreement for a new postage meter for City Hall.
We need a new one, right? I know we do, I know we do. Okay, so looking for council action with respect to this? Or any questions or comments or concerns?
I think it was like a dollar more than what we're paying right now.
That's huge.
I'll move to approve.
Council Paulson moves to approve the, a resolution for the lease agreement for the new postage meter. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Council Freely? Any further dis-
I was going to put my stamp of approval on that.
Wow. Nicely done. I'm going to write that one down. So it's been moved and supported with a stamp of approval. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approve resolution for change order number one for the 2021 Street Improvement Project. And we have Matt Reed here to discuss this request.
Thank you, Matt.
Good morning again. These are the change orders we like. These ones are negative, so these are the good ones. We had, we had specified certain materials without getting into all of the gory engineering details. We had specified a certain material that they were to use to bed the pipe. Once they got going on the project, they were able to use what was in place or I, or at least you, the, the material in place was conducive to using a different material in some locations that was less expensive. So this is just a credit of $11,420 to the city for that work that was done previously.
Moved? Moved by Council Freely. Is there support?
No support.
Support by Council Bearbu. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you. Matt, I just got to say you're one of the only contractors that comes before this council frequently with these negative change orders. It's refreshing, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
The next item on the agenda is approve the updated license agreement with St. Louis County for the use of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for the COVID-19 testing and vaccination site.
Very good, thank you. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm comfortable moving forward with this lease. However, in, in light of certain situations and circumstances that have, are coming up within our community, I want to make it clear, I want to have an understanding. If the county has a specific masking policy, what policy needs to be followed and does that need to be addressed in this as we go forward discussing masking issues with other entities leasing city spaces?
Thank you. The licensing agreement, if I read it correctly, Brian, refers to the use of the, of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for testing and vaccinations. There's nothing in that agreement that requires masks, but we should have a clarification on what is that policy if they're leasing a, a specific part of the building and we're approving this for the, the vaccinations and testing. Do they have the authority within that, within that license agreement for that specific part of the building to require masks for the vaccination purposes and, and, and for, for the COVID-19 testing? So the reason I had, we asked this question is that usually when you went to a private event or you went to a Walgreens or somewhere else, someone who does that, they normally require the mask in order for you to get the vaccination or to get, to get tested. So do you have any opinions on that?
Thank you, Mayor. And so the, the answer to the question depends on the level of control of the space. So in a building like the Iron Trail Motors Center, if we're licensing or leasing or providing a possessory interest to the space for a specified period of time, so if they're in control of the space in St. Louis County and, and control of that space has the ability to exclude people from coming in, basically like it's a private event, then they can, they can impose or they can require that their policy as far as masking be followed. If on the other hand, the control is something less than that full control like it would be in a, in a full rental, then the city's policy would control. If a member of the public can still enter the building and, and walk around, then the city's policy would be controlling. So the, the ultimate answer to the question depends on who's in ultimate control of that space. If during the, just to be a little more clear, if during the period of the vaccination, the county providing vaccinations, they're in complete control of that space to the exclusion of others, then they can impose their policy. But if members of the general public are still allowed to enter as they would a city building, then the city's policy shall control.
So the question would be, if I may, Council Paulson, so the question that would be, Sean Louis County rents room four, for lack of a better, room four, and that's, that's exclusive agreement to rent room four to do that. Any other access to the entire facility falls under the city policy? And if they're leasing or renting or giving permission to them to do the vaccination there for some kind of agreement and they send room four, they control room four?
That's correct.
Thank you. Council Paulson?
Excuse me, in the license agreement, there, it's various ballrooms, it's non-specific, and it's also the hallway. So I, I believe that should be clarified because that's a significant amount of that space when people will be walking in and out of that space to utilize. The various conference rooms or boardrooms are, is, that hallway is conjoining and they state, they state the different, the various ballrooms, they don't give specifics to the room, so.
Just shed a little light on that. The reason why Brian just said various is it, whatever day they're working on, if there's somebody using ballrooms one through three, they'll be in four. And then the next week, it might be, they might be in ballroom one because somebody's in four through two, so it's.
And it also states the hallway.
The hallway is the concerning part, yes, that's the, that is the concerning part.
So I need clarification on this legally.
Okay. Yeah, just on, on the premises, under the licensure, thank you for pointing this out to me, Pam. On a premise, premises two B, it says use of lobby and ballrooms, entrance through door one and exit through door 20. So I think we do need a clarification on that. So I look for council action about getting some clarification about this before moving forward or whatever the elected body has liked to do. Council Paulson?
I guess I would just proffer that we add the city mask policy unless it's designated to a specific location of a room, but common space should be city policy.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. And perhaps, perhaps another way to, to incorporate that is to indicate that, you know, use of hallways and, and areas that would be needed to travel from one space to another by the general public, that they would be granted permission to use those, but it would be a non-exclusive use. So they would get exclusive use of the room where they're actually conducting their activities and non-exclusive use of hallways and, and through fares that would get people shuttled around within the building.
Council Paulson?
Thank you. I would, I would be fine with that. Again, this is going to be setting a precedent for future activity happening within that building. So I think we need to be mindful of what, what action step we're taking today because this would then include high school hockey at the arena.
We have, we have, we have two options here. One is to table until we get that clarification or prove it contingent upon, we, we ensure that there's a exclusive, the exclusive, exclusivity of, of, of part of that updated agreement. So is any other questions or comments from the council? Council Bearbu?
Yeah, and maybe I missed it in this agreement, but also if they're using these areas and you get a COVID positive testing and stuff in those areas, I believe they needed some, somewhere in the, after the proper cleanup. And I didn't see that unless I missed that in, in the agreement, but they'd have to do the cleaning up. I didn't see it. But I may have missed it too. Anybody else see that? But they'd have to disinfect and do other stuff like we had to do when COVID was a, a strong thing because it can linger around for a day or so, you know, at least on inanimate objects.
Right, and, and I think part of that COVID testing policy is, is when you test for COVID, you may not get that result for three or four days, so you won't even know that, right? So I think that's, you know, I think we've, they've used the, Sean Louis County, we've given permission to use the old, instead of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, which we're now abusing, the old building, the old miners building, we, we allowed them to do that then. It wasn't an issue then, but I, it, it has become an issue now. So those two items, I think we need some clarification on. I think that's what we're all looking at is the information with respect to the exclusivity of that and the, the, the testing policy and how that works. And I know that going in for a test, it took me, you know, three days to get it. I mean, they can do the forehand thing, but I think that, that the actual COVID testing is, is you get three day or four days. And then the policy has been, and whether this is with St. Louis County or not, if you're a negative, they don't even let you know. They only notify if you're a positive, so, so you may never, you know, when you make that inquiry. So I think those two things have to be clarified from my perspective as well. I think we want to make sure we have a clean contract. I, I don't know what the difference is between what we did at the old building and what we're doing now with the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So, Council Bearbu, you have anything else?
Oh yeah, I know, I know your clinics and stuff notify you if you're positive or negative, both. Either, either way, they send you a notification. I think that's important, that individuals are notified either way, so they know they're, they know they're clean, uh, clean also with notification. They can do it electronically, they can do it however they want, but I think that's an important step.
Well, I think so too, but, but my personal example is I went in for a testist routine for whenever I go to the doctor, get the routine test. And so I never got the result back. So I would call and they say, well, if you're not positive, we don't notify you. So I mean, I, I guess it depends upon what entity it is. So I think those two issues, if we could clarify those things, when, is this time sensitive? Do we need to, can we have this information available by the next council meeting? Or Pam?
It's already been posted on their website that this is one of the testing facilities.
And when, when does that begin?
Um, September 28th.
September the 28th, 2021. So.
I move to table until we get the further clarification and maybe send out an email to the county until we get that information to remove it from their website.
Okay, it's been moved to table before I ask for a second. We could, might we be able to get that clarification from them by the next council meeting so we could continue to discuss that at the next council meeting? So what has been moved to table, is there support for that? Support by Council Bearbu to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Biondich? Cuffy?
Yes.
Bearbu?
Yes.
Freely?
No.
Paulson?
Yes.
Biondich? Johnson is absent.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda comes from yesterday's personnel meeting. It's the figure skating coach job descriptions and wages.
Yeah, thank you. The Personnel Committee met and with the members of Mayor Cuffy, Council Freely, and Council Paulson to talk about this, this figure skating coach job description and wages. We had some, some significant discussion with respect to that or recommendation coming forward from the Personnel Committee after some discussion, not only with elected body, but members of the audience. And so I think I would ask if, if, if you would like to do that, Council Paulson or Council Freely to kind of give a synopsis of that, otherwise I can do that, so. All right, okay, so we met as a Personnel Committee and had some significant discussions about the figure skating coach job description and wages and how, and how that moves forward. And we do, we have some additional information about the history of that, where historically we had, now there's, there was a stipend before that, they, they were under private contract, but over the last couple of years, they've been under our Park and Rec Department, you know, and is, and, and, and employees of the city. And so those are the, some of the things that still need to be worked out with respect to that. But at that meeting, really, the, the gist of, of their request was, and then Brian will work this out, the gist was is that there was a proposal, as you have before you, and what they're asking for. And they're asking for the job description and, and it's recommended by our staff and by Park and Rec that we approve the job descriptions. They're increasing their services from, from six months of skating, of coaching and lessons and things like that to the entire year. And so they were looking for some additional compensation, whether it's a stipend or whether it's a wage or whatever, that, you know, that's, needs to be clarified. But they made a request to, they currently get, I think it's $9,000 a year. They asked for an additional $2,500 a year and $1,500 for, to put on their skating show. So to increase their, their coaching of the kids in the, in the startup program and others, that they want to make sure that they do it all year round. So their original request based upon these discussions here at the, at the Personnel Committee yesterday was that they asked for the additional $2,500 and $1,500. And, and I believe, if I may, and I'll defer to the rest of the committee members, that it was moved and supported at that meeting yesterday to bring this forward to the committee of the whole meeting for, as, as a recommendation moving forward to approve the request by the skating coaches with, with the support of our staff and, and Brian Silver, Park and Rec Director for that additional stipend of $2,500 plus $1,500. And then I think part of that discussion was that, that after the end of the fall season, that it, that would be revisited by the coaching staff and Brian Silver to determine if any adjustments have to be made to the contract moving forward and whether that be, and how the compensation moves forward from there. And it will, he'll, he will have and we will have a better understanding what the revenue stream is and, and how that revenue is, is parted out. So I hope that I've, I've kind of encapsulated that in a synopsis, but Council Freely or Council Paulson, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, this is what was brought forth to us from the coaches and they feel it's fair and reasonable for this to be approved. And so I would move to approve the job descriptions as they've been presented to us.
And with the compensation attached to it as well.
And the compensation attached.
Thank you. Moved by Council Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Council Bearbu?
Yes, if they're going to be going, and I didn't, haven't had a chance to read this, I didn't see it before tonight's or this morning's process here. Is there going to be an additional cost to utilize the ice that they're going to be using all year round instead of just part of the year now? Is that part of this agreement?
Well, I, I think that's a very good question. The discussion was the compensation portion of it for the coaches is included in this contract. We believe the job description is appropriate, the additional compensation for the additional six months is appropriate, but any revenue stream that's generated from that will be, would, would be monitored and calculated for the end of the fall season by our Park and Rec Director. And part of that revenue that's been, that's, that's gleaned from that goes to pay for the ice time of, of their use, not only for the, you know, for the entire season.
Okay, like on a prorated basis is what you're saying?
Yes, and, and our Park and Rec Director, Brian Silver, indicated he wanted to make sure that it was a fair and equitable assessment of ice time, which is parallel to what Vaha pays.
Okay.
So there's, so it's a fair.
I'm okay with that.
Fair and equitable compensation with respect to, or the, or the cost of renting ice. So thank you. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 11, the Confidential Minister of Assistant Position in the Police Department. We have been notified that our, our existing confidential administrative assistant secretary is retiring on December 9th. Has been discussion that this position, due to some changes in the job description, should be moved out of a confidential position into an ASME position. So I have passed out to you the current job description, the current existing ASME employee's position description, and so you can see the difference between the two, what the two different positions do. Then I put in there some suggested changes that we had so far, listed in the, in the administrative assistant confidential job description. And then the ASME wage scale.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I would like to hear from Amanda as moving forward when she comes up, but as, as Amanda, the representative for ASME comes up, the only issue I have with the, the, the change, and I, I'm supportive of moving into the ASME position, I think it's appropriate to do that. The only issue is, was discussed and, and Amanda brought it up with respect to the confidential part of it. We have some, some, some short discussion with our, our legal counsel, Brian Silver, regarding the duties and responsibilities of the job description that says Administrative Assistant Confidential Police Department. If I refer you to item 11 on the agenda, which is says assist management with typing and filing all confidential contract communications documents for the Public Safety Department. and filing all confidential contract communications documents for the Public Safety Department, that I think is okay, but including labor negotiations work, that would have to be stricken in order for it to be removed as, so that it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with, you know, a confidential status. So that wouldn't change, it wouldn't change the salary portion of it, it just takes that portion out, and we reassign that to some other entity, because I, we don't want, I don't want to have some kind of a breach based upon a conflict. So by removing this helps a lot, but I'm going to ask Amanda, the representative for ASME, she was at the meeting last night, and if I may, Amanda?
Item 11. Correct, we would have to, we'd have to remove any responsibility for participation or receiving information related to labor negotiations or the labor contracts from management side.
So if an employee is not continuing and utilizing their data as a manager of law, and so it doesn't have, you know, any, I don't have an issue with correcting that section of item 11, but I do not consider it implied or implied after utilizing. So if you're going to get the, I can file, um, the, that's not supposed to be a lot much, but, you know, that's, but you need to look at the job description, how does this, is right to the application, and how to edit, um, I think that idea, that's, I don't have an issue with correcting that section of item 11, but I do not consider it implied or implied after utilizing. So if you're going to get the, um, I can file, um, the, that's not supposed to be a lot much, but, you know, that's, but you need to look at the job description, how does this, is right to the application, and how to edit, um, I think that idea, that's, I don't have an issue with correcting that section of item 11, but I do not consider it implied or implied after utilizing. So if you're going to get the, um, I can file, um, the, that's not supposed to be a lot much, but, you know, that's, but you need to look at the job description, how does this, is right to the application, and how to edit, um, I think that idea, that's, I don't have an issue with correcting that section of item 11, but I do not consider it implied or implied after utilizing.
No, thank you very much, Amanda, appreciate that. So we'll move to the rest of elected body, Councilor Paulson, part of the Personnel Committee of yesterday.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know we didn't really get quite in depth with this document, with the strike throughs, but two, one point, or two points. So number one, this is going to have to be, the job description will have to be approved, and then it'll go back to the union, is that correct, for the wage structuring?
Yes.
Okay. And then on, so on, I don't know, it's the one that Britt had highlighted, new need, wage negotiation, sorry. Under those bullet points, there's must attend and successfully complete the CJRS, and then underneath the MN CIS. Why do those need to be stricken, and is that an important thing or skill that they would need to actually undertake?
I actually moved them to special requirements, to the next page, because it is a special requirement, that is something that, it is a very specific training course that you have to attend, and it is not in the city, you'd have to go to it, so it does require travel, does require comprehension and ability to understand and learn, so it is a very specialized set of skills.
Okay, so we're moving that from the necessary knowledge of skills into...
Special requirements.
...the requirements, which the city will actually then provide, that the candidate won't be coming to the table with those...
Correct, correct. We don't expect that. Most people, if you haven't worked in the police department in that specific role, doing those things, you wouldn't have it.
It just seems so...
Narrow.
...refined.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you for that.
And when we hired Sue, she worked for the state in the courthouse and had that, so it was, the job description was, worked for her. We may not find that person again, but we would like to find somebody that's really great, that we can train, and that would be wonderful.
Yeah, and I think if we move to item seven on the new negotiation, looking at that, when I was looking at it last night, looking at how this works out, the number, item number seven, which is performs criminal histories, driver license, property, et cetera, inquiries in the state Criminal Justice Information System, that's what CGI stands for, and the HOT files, which is, there's a lot of confidential information comes out of there. So even a police officer can't run a driver license without probable cause or reasonable suspicion, they have to have for a very specific purpose. So when that is asked of the administrative secretary in which to do so, you know, that's considered to be information that can be publicly disseminated. And so that falls under the guidelines established by that, but it is part of the duties and responsibilities of the administrative assistant for the police department, and makes sense for that to be done, because in other police agencies, whether they are not confidential employees, they perform this very same function, and they have to do that in order to enter criminal records into the CGIs or the NCIC, which is the National Criminal Information Center. So, thank you. Okay, so we have the new position for us to take a look at. Assistant Sheriff Amanda Metza is comfortable with it the way it is, as far as the job description goes. Now the next step is to take a look at this job description from the elected body, approve or disapprove or table or take some kind of action today about this, and then if it's approved, then the salary negotiations begin with our staff and to follow the ASME contract, should we decide that this is going to be moved into the ASME union, which I agree and concur. So any questions, comments, concerns, or action by the City Council? Councilor Bearbo?
What, and I don't see it in there, what kind of disciplinary action is there in this new job description, that if the individual has duties to input confidential information into the state data system or the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension data system, how do we do that? I don't see that in there. But I, but I think if something gets leaked, that's supposed to be confidential, it needs to be a, it needs to be a disciplinary procedure in there.
I think, before we go to Brian, I think, and let me, correct me if I'm not wrong, if I'm wrong, we'd follow the disciplinary policy that's in the contract, and our disciplinary policy as well. If there's a, if there's a violation, just like if there was previously when we had the confidential secretary, if there's any leak of information to somebody, that, that could be a criminal charge as well. Brian?
Correct, and Mayor, you beat me to it. Essentially, those types of infractions will be covered by our internal personnel policies, the rules related to the job, and then ultimately by state law.
Okay, then I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looking for some council action here. Anybody like to make a motion or any other information? Okay, well, seeing none, I will step down as the mayor, if I may. Do I have to step off, out of the chair?
You don't, Mayor, no.
Okay, I would step down and make a motion that we approve the job description as amended and move that position into the ASME union. Moved by Mayor Cuffey, supported by Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request from our library director, Jody Gervnaski, for the in-service days in November and December, and Jody is here in the audience to discuss her request.
Thank you, Jody, and again, Jody was at our Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, and we did have a Personnel Committee, and we discussed this, and we recommended that come forward to the committee home meeting for approval, and we'll turn this over to Jody. Jody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have requested, actually, Friday, November 12th off, and then Friday, December 17th, the morning off. The November meeting will be closing the library, and with the plan of doing some more work in the children's room, as we are looking at some of our projects for there, which will include recataloging and various other things, making our shelving more kid-friendly, because it's very tall. And then the Friday, the one in December is going to be more towards, what are we, are we ready for '22? What planning do we have to do? Is everybody on the same page? It's very difficult for us all to be in the building at the same time right now, just with schedules. So those are my two dates to request to close the library.
Hey, thank you, and these working sessions are important and prudent moving forward, so looking for council action.
Move the approval of the request for the in-service days?
Councilor Freely moves to approve the request by Library Director Jody for the closing those two days for in-service and other matters related to the library, is there support? Support by Councilor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request from our library director, Jody Gervnaski, for the in-service days in November and December, and Jody is here in the audience to discuss her request.
Thank you, Jody, and again, Jody was at our Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, and we did have a Personnel Committee, and we discussed this, and we recommended that come forward to the committee home meeting for approval, and we'll turn this over to Jody. Jody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have requested, actually, Friday, November 12th off, and then Friday, December 17th, the morning off. The November meeting will be closing the library, and with the plan of doing some more work in the children's room, as we are looking at some of our projects for there, which will include recataloging and various other things, making our shelving more kid-friendly, because it's very tall. And then the Friday, the one in December is going to be more towards, what are we, are we ready for '22? What planning do we have to do? Is everybody on the same page? It's very difficult for us all to be in the building at the same time right now, just with schedules. So those are my two dates to request to close the library.
Hey, thank you, and these working sessions are important and prudent moving forward, so looking for council action.
Move the approval of the request for the in-service days?
Councilor Freely moves to approve the request by Library Director Jody for the closing those two days for in-service and other matters related to the library, is there support? Support by Councilor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Jody. Item number 13 is approve the resolution to hire recreation assistants, and these come from the 10/4/2021 interviews that were conducted yesterday.
And so I see we have a resolution that will be adopted if we move forward with this at our October 12, 2021 council meeting, and it's the request at this committee level to hire four recreation assistants, Bobby Joe Hendricks, Anthony Block, Alex Bissonnet, and Ray Ann Zupitz.
I'll move to approve.
Councilor Paulson moves to approve, is there support? Support by Councilor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Councilor Beyondich?
Thank you. Could you tell me what their duties would be?
Their duties include anything from event setup to cleanup, from anything from setting up tables to washing dishes, if the caterer does not do them. They do concession stand sales and cleanup preparation, food prep for the concession stand. They do pipe and drape for any event that requires pipe and drape, they will set that up. They clean bathrooms, they clean hallways, they vacuum, they mop, they sweep, et cetera.
And how many hours a week is this job? Is it similar to the concession stand employees that we hired?
Yes, these are the last set that we are hiring. We were approved, there are up to 10.
Okay.
There are up to 10 and 12 total. This is our last set of them.
Who monitors the hours?
That would be Jim Hunt and Brian Silver.
Well, thank you, Councilor Beyondich. So it has been moved and supported to hire the four individuals, once again Bobby Joe Hendricks, Anthony Block, Alex Bissonnet, and Ray Ann Zupitz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I have no further items, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have on the agenda here any other items of concern. I'm going to, I suppose I'll just wait for the council meeting, but I just want to say how hard these guy, people have been working over there at the Recreation Center, and Saturday night's event for the Rentson Chamber, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the council meeting, it was very elegant and very well-prepared, and our staff worked diligently and very professional. To see it, one, the first private event there was just phenomenal, so I'm very pleased. So, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to bring before we adjourn to our council meeting, which is scheduled for October 12, 2020, or 21? A real quick question there, the bonding committee is going to meet, was it tomorrow night, Wednesday?
Tomorrow night, starting at 5:00, I believe we're at 5:40 for our 2023 Street Improvement Project Request.
Thank you, and that'll be at the college?
At the college in the Commons.
And the, Team Virginia will be there to...
Team Virginia consisting of Matt Reed, Mayor Cuffey, and Britt Seale will be there begging for money for our 2023 Street Projects.
Okay, thank you, who will be doing that? All right, thank you, Britt. So any other issues to come before the council meeting today? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned, the time is 10:04 a.m. Thank you, everybody.